Welcome to the July 11th, 2023 City Council Meeting. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Dolan, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me as we come together in each of our own spiritual traditions to give thanks and to ask guidance as we meet in these chambers to look to the challenges facing our community. God of justice and mercy, thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve our community. Thank you for the members of our community for which we serve. Thank you for the generosity and the compassion of our community. We ask for the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time. We ask that our decisions reflect accuracy and impartiality as we consider the merits and ramifications of each item before us today. Guide us to be the leaders our citizens need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of all. Give each of us clarity of mind, creativity, compassion, and integrity. Let us be mindful of and express our gratitude for this extraordinary community in which we live, work, and play. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have some recognitions. Our first is the Aerofin 100-year anniversary proclamation. President Jeff Spade, if you want to step forward? Just, just, you can stand over there at the microphone. Sure. Whereas in 1923, Carrier, Westinghouse, American Blower, and Buffalo Forge were the four giants of the heating, cooling, and refrigeration industry in the U.S., together they merged forces to form a separate company that could support their growth in the global market. And whereas on May 4th, 1923, these parent companies created the Aerofin Corporation, which was established as a manufacturer of commercial lightweight heat exchangers, innovative coils with spiral-wound finned tube designs, and an array of products used in the heating, cooling, air, and refrigeration industry worldwide. And whereas Aerofin manufactured their products in Syracuse, New York until 1965, when the company moved to Lynchburg and constructed a facility of over 100,000 square feet. And whereas Aerofin began manufacturing products for the worldwide nuclear utility industry in 1966 and has become the premier supplier of safety-related and ASME N-stamped heat exchangers in the nuclear power generation industry. And whereas today, the plant is over 165,000 square feet and is a leading manufacturer of the finned tube heat exchanger coils and related heat transfer equipment and accessories. And whereas in 2021, Aerofin Corporation was named one of the best Virginia-based mechanical engineering companies by Engineeringness, a global online engineering networking resource. And whereas Aerofin, a leader in the Lynchburg business community, continuously gives back by working with organizations such as Greater Lynchburg Habitat for Humanity and Central Virginia Community College. Now, therefore, I, Stephanie T. Reed, Mayor of the City of Lynchburg, do hereby recognize Aerofin Corporation's 100th anniversary and extend congratulations to the company on this important milestone.
(Applause).
What's that? Not people, but I'm not...
Said you don't look 100.
Ah, okay. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Now, we have another recognition for Bert Dodson of the Commonwealth Transportation Board. If you would come forward, Mr. Dodson. Okay. Whereas Bert Dodson served as a member of the Virginian, Virginia Commonwealth Transportation Board, or C.T.B., from July 1st, 2018 until June 30th, 2023, as the Lynchburg District Representative. And whereas Dodson always ensured the Lynchburg District had his best interest at heart with opportunities, resources, and investments totaling over $100 million that will continue to keep this area strong and viable. And whereas during his tenure with the C.T.B., Dodson advocated for and supported numerous projects in Lynchburg, including the U.S. 501-221 Intersection Improvements Project, the John Capron, Capron Road Extension Project, the Blackwater Creek Trail Extension Project, and multiple sidewalk, sidewalk projects. And whereas not only have these projects enhanced the safety and beauty of our streets, trails, and infrastructure, they have also created lasting benefits for future generations. And whereas Bert Dodson has indeed rendered an invaluable service to this area as a member of the C.T.B., and the enormity of his accomplishments do not go unnoticed. Now, therefore, I, Stephanie T. Reed, Mayor of the City of Lynchburg, do hereby recognize Bert Dodson. On behalf of the City of Lynchburg and the Lynchburg City Council and the Greater Lynchburg Community, I extend sincere appreciation for your dedicated service to our community.
Thank you. Appreciate it. (Applause).
I was gonna say, I was not gonna say anything, but since my former colleague, Jeff Helgerson, asked me to, I'll succumb to his wishes. The Commonwealth Transportation Board is made up of 14 members, five at large and nine districts. The Lynchburg District has nine, 10 counties, a bunch of towns, and two cities, Lynchburg and Danville. We decide around $4 billion a year in road improvements. I followed Shannon Valentine, who became Secretary of Transportation, which has over 10,000 people working under her direction now. It's Shep Miller from Norfolk that knows our city manager. Before that was Mark Pete, who's now a state senator, Jimmy Davison, Ken White, legends in the business community, legal community of Lynchburg. And it was a great job. It was a lot of work. It was really interesting that some of the projects I got didn't have to get any votes. I could prove it myself. I said, "This is different than city council." Okay? So, it was wonderful. It took a lot of time and effort. I will say that North Virginia representatives always want to take as much money as they can up there. Since I'm off of there, they can throw some bars at me later. But the Transportation Board did a lot of good things. And Department of Transportation Virginia is over, almost 100 years old. We have the third-largest lane miles in the country as far as operated by the state. Texas, North Carolina, the front, one and two, and then Lynch, and then Virginia. It's, I have over 600 people that worked in Lynchburg District for VDOT under Chris Winstead. Very great people. The senior staff is excellent. As you said, we've got some big projects. And I will tell you, as a former council member, I will tell you quite frankly, the money is there, it's not going anywhere. It's ironclad. So, when, from improvements of $65 million at the Counters Mountain Road and Expressway Exchange, I think around $19 million over 501 and 221, this will help future generations of business leaders and future generations of Lynchburg citizens to get around better. So, bottom line, it was the best non-paying job I ever had in my life. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Tonight, City Council agenda is divided into four sections: consent agenda, public hearing, public comment, and general business. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may approve, be approved by one vote. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. One second.
Second.
Okay. Go ahead and vote.
The motion passes six with one extension. Okay.
All right.
I will clear the board.
We'll do that one more time. Go ahead and vote, please.
The motion passes seven zero.
All right. Next session, section is public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to council for deliberation. Consideration of adopting an ordinance vacating a public easement lying between 1504 Elm Street, 1500 Main Street, and 1520 Main Street. Staff will provide a brief summary of requests. Ms. Eve Murgenthaller, thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, this item was brought before you as a business item briefing at the June 27th work session. Andy Maddox of Maine LLC is petitioning to vacate an easement for public right-of-way on a portion of Elm Street located between 1504 Elm Street, 1500 Main Street, and 1520 Main Street. The purpose of the petition is to allow the installation of parking for the continued expansion of the Wayne, which is a development that consists of condo units and amenities. The area to be vacated currently contains a paved road that serves the adjoining lots. To ensure continued access, a 15-foot-wide public bluff walk pedestrian easement has been established on 1504 Elm Street, and a 24-foot-wide public access easement has been established on 1500 Main Street. With the access easements in place, vacating the easement for public way should not impact vehicle or pedestrian traffic.
Okay. Thank you very much. Would the petitioner like to make a presentation?
I live at 1500 Main Street. So, I think everybody's kind of seen the Wayne as it developed over the last couple of years, and this is our phase, second phase of that expanding. It just kind of made sense after we started talking to the city that we would look at vacating this so we could get parking back there. Being on that end of the city, it's kind of an oasis, you know? We don't really have a lot of parking on that end, so parking is very important to me. We build a lot of apartments throughout the city and the counties, and we always try to be, have two parking spaces per unit. So, this actually puts us in that realm there. So, I think it's a good thing for the city. You know, some brief facts about the motel there. I'm not sure that everybody knows, but it was built in '62. It was Lynchburg's first five-star hotel. The Grateful Dead, when they would tour, they would only stay at Ramada Inn's. So, when they would come to Roanoke, they'd come to Lynchburg. The Piedmont Club that used to be on the top floor of the Bank of James started in the basement of the Ramada Inn. So, it's just been a fun project to do. We're mainly new construction guys, but this one's been interesting. So, I appreciate your consideration. If I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to.
Thank you so much. If we have any questions, we'll call you back up.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this? Okay, come on up. Oh, not in favor? Oh, okay. Well, we'll get to you next. Anybody in favor? No? Okay. Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition?
I'm Christine Dixon. I own property on Pearl Street, and I'd, like, just so you guys understand that Pearl Street's really the only access at this point, and this new housing development is going to make it difficult because it's a one-lane road. I'd like to cover six, six points really quickly. One, the roadway on said block of Pearl Street is approximately 20 feet wide, starting with street parking along the east side, leaving a traffic lane of about 12 feet, not sufficient for two-way, two-way traffic. Two, said section of Elm Street has no outlet, i.e., it's a dead end. Therefore, traffic for the planned housing development will result on a potentially large increase in the traffic in both directions on Pearl Street with the only ingress egress available. Three, traffic trying to egress from Pearl Street must turn either right or left onto Main Street, which is already difficult and sometimes unsafe with poor visibility to the left. Furthermore, backed-up vehicles waiting to turn block the ingress egress to the parking lot of Diamond Hill Animal Hospital on the corner of Main and Pearl, and to any vehicles trying to turn onto Pearl Street from Main Street. Four, this one-block section of Pearl Street is extensively used by TCM cleaning professionals, including street parking, much of it with larger commercial vehicles. Five, these vehicles utilize the Pearl, Pearl and Elm Street intersection to turn their vehicles, and since there is no outlet on Elm, any encroachment by street privatization will further congest traffic, especially when combined with the planned new housing development. Six, it is also used by Diamond Hill Animal Hospital clients and staff to access a private parking area on the west side of Pearl Street, which extends to the corner of Elm Street. These drivers are also making U-turns or backing into traffic at this intersection. So, it's, it's, it's basically a safety hazard, and it's just a difficulty for property owners on Pearl Street. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Okay.
Good evening, council members. My name's Sid Sterosum. I also work at Diamond Hill Animal Hospital and another business in the same area. Between Dr. Dixon and myself, we own all the property on the west side of Pearl Street, which is the only, presently the only ingress and egress to Elm Street where this new development is going. Unless we hear of a particular good traffic plan, this will be a disaster. It's very, very difficult to get out of Pearl Street onto Main Street, which is how everybody would be coming in and going. I have no idea how many units there are going to be. Mr. Maddox said he couldn't tell me how many units or how high they were going to be building, but it could be a very considerable, and I think pretty devastating influx of vehicles, vehicle traffic trying to get out of Pearl Street. The biggest concern is getting out, not getting in, and it blocks the parking lot of Diamond Hill Animal Hospital when there's two cars backed up waiting to get onto Main Street, especially if they're trying to make a left turn. I think the, the solution is that, first of all, there has to be dedicated, some other dedicated ingress and egress for people getting into this development, perhaps alongside Oppelman's or using the motel traffic light entrance. And part of the most important thing is that traffic should not, from there, should not be allowed to come back onto Pearl Street. If it's privatized, there should be a sign that says, "No, no entry," because any substantial increase in traffic going out of Pearl Street will completely paralyze that street for our businesses on Pearl Street and TCM Cleaning as well. I'm also concerned that if this goes forward, and there's a huge traffic problem, it's going to be dumped on the city because the city won't own any of, any of the roadway back there anymore, and the city's going to be expected to do something about it, and the typical solution would be, well, we've got to widen Pearl Street, and that means a taking probably from us. And I want to make it very clear that you're on notice that this is for the benefit of private property, private investors. May I have another minute to finish, please?
Yeah, until it turns...
Okay. Thank you. This is for the benefit of private investors. They're going to be making a lot of money off of this, and if our property, if the city finds it has no other recourse but to take our property by eminent domain, it will be for private purposes, which is prohibited under the state constitution, not for public purpose, because you're on notice that this is happening right now, and it's all for the benefit of a private entity. And I think that's, that's all I need to say. If you have any questions about the proper, about the Pearl Street issue, I'd be happy to answer them. But Pearl Street is right now the only access, and I think this should not be, this should not go forward. There should be a, should be tabled until sometime in the future when there's a very detailed traffic plan, so people are not coming out of that development up, up Pearl Street. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here to speak? Okay. In the opposition.
Hello. I'm Lisa Rice. I'm the owner of Tri-County Maintenance and 1408 Main Street, and I want to say I'm in agreement with both, both of the previous speakers. We currently use eight parking spaces on Pearl Street along with two places for box trucks. We already have issues with loading equipment and chemicals and all of the things our company uses on a regular basis, and our trucks have nowhere else to park. So, Pearl Street is already crowded. I would encourage you to go down that street and just try to turn around right now. It's very difficult. So, unless there's another solution for a way out, this is not going to be compatible with what we already have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Are there any emails or phone calls from citizens? No? Okay. You have an opportunity for a five-minute rebuttal if you'd like.
I actually pride myself in trying to get to know my neighbors. Whenever we do a project, I've certainly met with both complainants. First I've heard of this. So, a couple of things. One, I have suggested to the cleaning company, I've helped clean up their building and trying to, you know, be a good neighbor there. So, I would have suspected that they had concerns. They would have came to me and we would have talked it out. The same way with the veterinarian, I'd actually gone and seen him, and we walked it, and not only talked about what was going back there, but also suggested that I take part in helping him clean up his side of the street and maybe expand the parking or trying to get some off-street parking from there. So, one of the facts is that, that when they say that that's the only way in and out, that's not necessarily true. The main way that I would see that residents that, from back there, on the other side towards the L. Oppelman Building, there will be a street that connects that way. So, the easy way to get out, any end would be to come at the stoplight, come through the motel, down the right side of the building to the back, back there. I don't think that's going to prevent anybody from going up Pearl Street, but I think the vast majority of the traffic would be on that side, and that's, that's what we had in mind because there's a traffic light. So, I think that's more along, you know, what's, what's going to happen there.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember?
Well, the public...
Oh, yeah. Okay. So, sorry. Anything else you would like to say?
No. I'd be glad to answer any other questions here. When it's time.
Okay. Well, then, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Thank you very much.
Can we run a check with Lisa first?
I already did. Yeah. Vice Mayor Feraldi.
I would ask city staff in review of this. Has there been any discussion about, because I'm looking at the, the map, and I'm looking at the attachments here. Has there been any discussion about with Pearl being still maintained by the city, correct?
Yes.
And Elm is no longer by this proposal? Has there been any discussion about saying, actually, if, the, the picture we had right there was actually perfect, if you don't mind? One, back one more.
That one.
So, that's the entrance that we're talking about. Coming in and out would be too much with the new residents at the development, by my understanding. That's the entrance, no, I understand, that's the entrance to Elm.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And the entrance to Pearl is on Main Street. So, my question is, literally at that, that turn that we're looking at right now, if there was to be some way to say that there's no thoroughfare allowed through, no vehicles that can go through there, that would prevent residents from using that as a, as a way to get out of the development? They would have to go through the, the light. Am I making sense?
Um, yes. I'm not sure if there's a way to do that in this vacation. Um, I mean, even if the street isn't vacated, the development could still continue, and residents would still be able to use Pearl Street, Pearl Street from Elm. There is a dedicated public access easement through 1500 Main Street, which will ideally be the main entrance for most of the residents. This vacation would provide additional parking spaces, which would ideally prevent people from using the parking on Pearl Street. So, I'm not sure if there's a way to make it one-way only or nobody from the development enters onto Pearl Street. But I would also like to note that they're not vacating the entirety of Elm Street or the easement on Elm Street. They are leaving a turnaround at the corner. It's not completely open to the left, but there is enough room for a turnaround for Pearl Street still.
Okay. I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, I, I hear the concern, and if the solution is to say, basically, you're turning the majority of, overwhelming majority of Elm into, respectfully, a parking lot, then preventing the issues on Pearl would be to say that you can't get out of Pearl by easing Elm. And you, if you park in that parking lot, you have to go through the light. That seems to make most sense to me, but I don't know if this is the proper way to get that.
Right.
So, I guess that's the only point I wanted to hear, is like, I hear the concerns of, of those who are there right now. That's the solution I'm thinking of, but I'm not sure if we can get that with this tonight, at this point.
Councilmember?
And as I see this, and as I hear the concerns of the neighbors, you know, when I first saw this, the normal procedure for an easement is to go to the Physical Development Committee, which, for some reason, it didn't go there. Secondly, when you have a vacation of a right-of-way, normally, all property owners need to agree. The adjacent property owners, the adjacent property owners vehemently disagree. The third thing that I saw, and we heard very eloquently from the neighbors citing the concerns, and, and then I see this fiscal impact, which obviously everybody knows I always look at the fiscal impact, and we have land that for some reason is just going to be given to somebody. And when you vacate, normally, you kind of split the sides if everybody agrees, rather than just saying, "Hey, you get to use it and make a parking lot." So, as I see this and as I hear the concerns from other council members already that spoke, I'll make a motion for denial, and at some point, if, if they can work it out, I think it would come back. But I think it's not just easy enough to kind of make a few little twists and turns. So, I'll make a motion that we deny this petition as presented.
Can I address a couple of points?
There's a motion on the floor first.
Is there a second?
I'll second the question.
Okay. So, the adjoining property owners to this part that is being vacated, all did agree. Those property owners are along Pearl Street, so they're not part of the vacation. The other point I'd like to address is that we are not giving them the land. This is a little different of a situation where the ownership of the street could not be determined. So, what we're vacating is the easement for right-of-way. So, we're not giving them any land. It's, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, we're kind of giving them the opportunity to pursue ownership at this point.
That's correct. So, the title to this area of Elm Street likely lies with the original subdivider of the property, as you saw from the opinion that Ms. Hartman had prepared from our office. So, based on the mapping, the law at the time of that particular mapping, the interest that the city holds is not fee simple. What fee simple means is full ownership. That's typically what you all see when we do a vacation of a right-of-way, and there are specific rules that apply when the city vacates a fee simple ownership. With an easement being vacated, all the city is doing is giving up its right to use it as a public right-of-way. So, that's what's being vacated here. We're simply giving up our right to use it and the public's right to use it without making any determination of ownership. It would be up to the petitioner to take legal action to determine ownership if they believe they have ownership or take action to what they typically call quiet title to have ownership in them. Because we have numbers in here for the fiscal impact. I see 174,000 to 249 is the value of the property. You know, normally, when they have an easement or a vacation, it's normally city property that is being divided. And... And again, I, I, I hear the concerns of the neighbors, and maybe that is something that, um, the developer can work on, because I've been down, been down Pearl Street a ton. I mean, and it's, I can appreciate, you know, what, when you have a, a public road that is now gonna be really impacted, and, and I appreciate the work that's being done at the hotel. I mean, that is fantastic, to see such a difference from a hotel. Um, you know, that used to be one of the best hotels, as was mentioned, you know, until the city started funding all the competition for hotels downtown. It's now turned into apartments. And, uh, so there's cause and effect on everything. I'm glad to see they're still using it, and, um, glad to see they're developing it into beautiful condos. I just don't, am not comfortable with saying, hey, the businesses that have been there for 30, 40 years, now you're gonna be impacted by the new business that's coming there, and they can park on your street. So I just, that's a, I got a very big heartburn with that. I don't think that is something, there hasn't been convincing proof that has been presented to us that says, hey, we should make this change. So unless there's been pretty good compelling reasons to make the change, it should stay the same way it is and protect the current property owners and protect the way it is until they come up with a different plan, as, as Vice Mayor suggested, maybe there could be a better way. That should have been the way to go, so.
Did you want to speak to your second?
Yeah. Um... We gotta take into concerns, we gotta take into consideration the concerns of the neighbors, obviously. Andy, I haven't seen you in a long time. I wouldn't have recognized you. Last time I saw you, you had a crew cut. Um, and, uh, you know, I don't, I also don't doubt the ability of Andy to do this responsibly and get this done, um, the right way. Would you consider amending your motion to table this until a specific date?
That would be fine.
Do you wanna put a, put a date on that and see if we can, you know, get some more information and try to figure out how to resolve everybody's concerns and, and...
So I think we have one meeting in August, maybe the second meeting in September. I think that would be ample time to allow folks to discuss, and that should be plenty of time. I know we have lots of other items already coming up for the work session. So whatever that date is, I don't know, Alicia, if you have a calendar, the, the second meeting in September?
September 26.
September 26th, so I will make a motion to table till the September 26th.
I'll second that motion.
And I think that's good, a, and I appreciate that, because that's, I think that's, gives time for everybody to discuss. I think that's a much better solution. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Just, just for, for those who find this interesting, I know I'm probably the only person in the room, but, um, I encourage my colleagues to read the memorandum from the city attorney's office, just because of the farthest back they go in offering who owned the property at first, uh, happens to be John Lynch.
Yeah.
From 1796. So it's just interesting. I, I think we should make sure we do it right. Um, I agree with tabling it and making sure we get the neighbors' concerns addressed and make sure we can still get the project going where it needs to go.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes, I'm glad to table. I appreciate the work you've done on that property. I mean, I can't say we can blame the city for the condition that the property ended up in, but I think if I'm just, from not taking care of the property and just keeping up to date, if you have property that don't continue to renovate and keep up to date with the market, you're gonna have some challenges. So thank you for changing that property. I mean, it was rather challenging to look at. So now it's a beautiful structure, so I'm so thankful that you have done that. I'm encouraged, I'm excited about that. Uh, to the, to the other property owners, I understand your concerns, and I go to the animal clinic right there, so I do know how hard it is to park there at this little spot. So I definitely appreciate your concerns, understand that. So I would like more time to review this. I've had challenges with my iPad, so I couldn't really look at it. So I would definitely like to go to, look at the property and look at what the plans are, and just talk with you and see more of your concerns, see if there is a solution that we can come up with, so we continue, maybe to continue the development, or see if there's another, as Councilman, um, Vice Mayor said, like, maybe some other alternative that we can look at that's feasible to both sides. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Taylor?
And I urge you to stay strong, and we're gonna get this done.
This is not a personal...
I, I know this. I know this. Uh, I live, I live right up the street from there, and, and that place was a mess, and you came in and made it worth looking at.
I'm sure we can work something out.
Yes. We, we appreciate what you, what you've done in White Rock Hill. That, that, that is nice. Now we need a grocery store. Work on a grocery store for me.
All right. Great.
That's the first thing, but you guys table this, so that's a big, uh, good one.
Okay, brother.
All right. Great. Great. Well, thank you. I think this sounds like we'll make, we're, we're compromising to table it, and I think that'll be, hopefully, we'll come to a, a good, uh, a good, uh, solution. So let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes. Seven, zero.
Great. Okay, moving on. Consideration of adopting a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow for 31 apartments in a mixed-use building located at 5900 to 5906 Fort Avenue. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Rachel Freshisen.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Uh, this property has been Zoned B3 Community Business District since 1978. The city's future land use map recommends a community commercial use for the property. 5900 Fort Avenue contains a one-story structure constructed in 1955. The structure was most recently used as a carpet and flooring store. 5906 Fort Avenue is currently vacant. When this application was submitted, uh, the petitioner was requesting a CUP to allow 31 units as part of a mixed-use development. Planning Commission recommended approval of that petition on April 12th, 2023. Uh, this is what I presented to you all at your business item briefing on May 23rd. Uh, yesterday, the petitioner submitted a revised plan to reduce the number of apartments from 31 to 25. 31 spaces are still proposed. Uh, more commercial space has been added as well. I'll let the project representatives speak more to their revised plans. Um, you also have a hard copy in front of you. It doesn't really look that much different. I've just highlighted the part where it says 25 spaces instead of 31. Uh, since this is a conditional use permit, council can revise and/or set additional conditions. Um, the resolution in your packet was written based on that original plan, which was dated April 6th. So if the revised plan is more preferable to council, I would recommend specifying the plan submitted yesterday, July 10th, uh, if council chooses to adopt a resolution to allow the project. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Would the petitioner like to make a presentation?
Mayor, council, my name is Daryl Kaufie. Thank you guys for the audience tonight. Uh, the petition in front of you guys is for 5900 Fort Avenue. The last significant investment done along that corridor on that side of the street was about the same time we sent a man to the moon. It was 1972. The last significant improvement was done in 1979. So what we're really looking at is an existing area that has kind of been forgotten. It's an opportunity to rebuild and restore. It's the things that Johanna and I have done over the last 15 years in Lynchburg. So what I propose to you guys tonight is an opportunity to build something that is not only sustainable, but also community-appropriate. Had the opportunity to meet with, uh, Councilman Hegelson onsite and hear the concerns about density. And so what we've represented to you guys tonight is something that lowers the residential dens- density and increases the commercial density. What you guys will see is an opportunity on that first floor to bring more business to that community. Um, we had the opportunity to meet with, uh, the pastor from the Quaker Memorial Church as well. Their church and their elders were in support of this project. Um, I think there may also be some neighbors from the area as well that are in support of this project. Um, myself, uh, the team from AccuPoint, and our architect are here if you guys have any questions. Um, thank you.
Thank you so much. We will call you back up if there's questions. Are there anyone, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor?
I'm Billy Hanson. I'm a commercial real estate appraiser and broker here in town. Um, I live on Mimosa, and I want to speak in favor of this, uh, petition. Um, I'm speaking as a neighbor tonight. Daryl and I have worked on projects together, but now I'm just as a neighbor. Um, I represent a group that bought the old Sun Trust right across the street after they left, uh, that location. And we've been working diligently to try to find another bank, a national retailer, a local retailer, some business that will go in there, and the overwhelming feedback we get is that stretch of road just seems dead. Seems like there's been no investment commercially, but they know the neighborhoods are strong. Those neighborhoods are great. I've got family and friends that have lived there for 40 years, but something about that commercial development from the bypassed awards has just not seen anything. And a lot of them are reluctant to be the first mover. And I think what Daryl has done really well downtown, Lower Rivermont, Bedford Avenue, is be that first mover that provides a spark for some new development. So, um, the exact details of the project, how many units, parking, I know you guys can work that out with staff and Daryl, but I think, uh, you guys have been wise in trusting him to provide a spark for neighborhoods, so that's why I am in favor of this. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any calls or emails?
There are none.
Okay. So there's no rebuttal needed? All right. The public, uh, hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Vice Mayor, I mean, sorry, Councilman Hegelson.
Uh, thank you. Um, you know, we talked about this a few weeks ago at the, uh, business item briefing, and I think council was unanimous once we were fairly close. Once we heard from Rachel Freshisen that this was at 31 units, it's 40-some units per acre. Our high density, I think Ms. Freshisen, uh, is somewhere around 18 to 20 is what's considered high-density residential units.
Uh, so the density... The density of the original plan, uh, which it's on .7 acres, um, 31 units on .7 acres is the equivalent of 44 units per acre. Um, and the revised plan is 25 units divided by .7, so 35 units per acre. And I am pulling up the number for high-density, which is 21.78 in R4 units per acre.
And, and so with that, what we're seeing, and I appreciate, uh, Daryl and, and us going out and looking, and, and I appreciate the challenges that are faced with this property. Um, but we do have rules that say high-density, um, can be, uh, mixed-use can be done where you have 50% of, you know, in a business zone, you can have 50% business, 50% residential. So right now, we're already exceeding that. Secondly, we're very familiar with our comprehensive plan, our zoning ordinance, and our future land use map that says normally around 20 units per acre is high-density. This is, even with the augmented, going from 31 down to 25, we're still almost double what normal high-density is. Um, I, I can appreciate the fact that they're trying to do something here. I appreciate that there was a little bit of movement when he and I talked, and I've known Daryl for a long time, and I greatly appreciate the work he does. I mean, that's, that's fantastic. Um, in an area, um, that I represent, and Timberlake Road, I think most everybody has recognized the traffic. Um, there are things that are improving in that area. I just don't think this is it. You know, our last developer came forward and said that on his apartments, he wants two spaces per unit. So this would need to be 25 parking spaces, or 50 parking spaces even at the 25. Under a normal, uh, you know, I recognize they're only looking for 31 or 25 spaces, but it's seven-tenths of an acre. To have 25 apartment units and have what's per the, our zoning ordinance, that 50% of it needs to be business, which you have the businesses and the workers and the employees and all the folks parking there, on seven-tenths of an acre, this is just way too much. It would be nice to come up with something, but I, in order to even get down to like the 17, 18, uh, units per acre, even 20 units an acre, we're gonna have to take it from 25 down to about 12, because you got 12 units with double the parking spaces. Uh, again, we're, we're not looking at five acres. We're not looking at a lot of acres of land. We're looking at seven-tenths of an acre of land. I'd love to see some kind of development happen here. Um, I appreciated the vision that he had by going up with it and having some pretty scenic views. I think that could be very nice. I think that could work to some regard. The problem is, it's just unbelievably too dense in an area that has been overrun by apartments. You go down Timberlake, anybody that's been there, you've seen the monstrosity of apartments already built on there. And not just saying this is the last one, and so they, therefore, they have to bear the brunt. But this is an area, uh, it's a business zone area that's been business. Friends of mine have run their, uh, fence company there for probably 15, 20 years. Um, so there has been some business that has been there. The businesses can change. It is business zoned. Um, I, and I think if we can wait, I think we'll have some, some better improvements. You know, I'm just, as I look at this and I think back what happened several years ago on, on Alta Lane, the developer came in and said, we want to put in a whole bunch of apartments. And council said, no, we'd have to change the zoning, we'd have to make lots of different changes. We weren't considering the current element of the neighborhood. And instead of giving them a rezoning and building all these apartments, he built half-million-dollar homes there that are selling like hotcakes, and it is fantastic. The neighborhood loves it. So sometimes, just because there's a proposal, I, I don't think I want to be the first to, to jump on a proposal to say, well, we at least got a proposal. I think we should have a good proposal, uh, because I think we should have a good proposal that recognizes this is only seven-tenths of an acre. There's, it's a business zone. We already have an adopted zoning ordinance that says if you're gonna put residential in a business, you absolutely have to follow the rules, which are 50%, no more than 50% residential. This is exceeding that. Um, this is also cramming 25 units on seven-tenths of an acre and a business and the parking. Um, I just, I don't see how it can work unless you can get this down to 12. You get it down to 12, you're still at about 20 units an acre. Uh, that's something that could possibly work, and with the parking, uh, that's still kind of pushing the envelope. But as presented, I can't support this, um, and I'll make a motion for denial.
For denial?
Well, I got some questions. It's, I mean, it's just a lot. It's a lot to pack on that small piece of land. Um, you mind coming up here and answering, answering some questions for me? What other options are there? Like, what, what could be done? You know, Councilman Hegelson mentioned the 12, 12 units. Is this a feasible project at doing something like that? What are other options that could be feasible?
That's a fair question to ask, and I think as we've ran the numbers, right, it has to be a sustainable project from an investment perspective at the beginning, right? And with 25, we're right at that break-even, right? And so if you look at that 50/50, right, I think it just is not a sustainable project long-term. I think from, your question's valid on the, when you look at Cornerstone or Winhurst, right, you have that energy above those businesses trying to support and bring life and energy to those spaces. You know, I think when we looked at that area, it's just been so forgotten for so long. And if you look at what we're doing on Bedford Avenue, it's working, right? We're about to build above the, um, dry cleaners, and that is a, a 60/30 on just top of the dry cleaners, right? So what we're proposing there on top of the old carpet shop is actually more like probably 60/40, you know? So we're, we're really trying to bring business to that bottom area, to bring people in, whether it's coworking, whether it's another bagel shop, you know? We're really trying to bring some life back into Fort Avenue. And to Mr. Hanson's point, like, I hope it would be a spark, right? Because there's some significant landowners across the street in Liberty, and that might energize them. And my hope is, is that the area just doesn't turn into another place for vape shops and, you know, lottery machines, which that's happening on down the street on the other side, so.
And, you know, I, I guess, th- you brought up some really good points. Um, because I kind of look at, I guess one of the things that I have in my mind is, I think it's the view in Cornerstone. it's the view in Cornerstone, right? So they're bigger units, but you understand how they work, right? Where it's, they're kind of like subleased by room, different options. I don't know if there's something more creative, some way to come up with something that would kind of meet that, because, I mean, we're talking about double what the goal is here for our density.
I think it's a great question, because when we first looked at this project, my business partner, Stuart Barney, is in charge of a lot of property there on that corner. You know, a lot of those homes that are R2. And the truth is that we could bulldoze it all, and we could build something that's completely inappropriate for the community and those houses around it. So what we tried to present was something that I felt like was beautiful and sustainable, and also was very appropriate for the space. I took some photos for the packet that are the current, what the current space looks like, and we're looking at like old tractor trailers that are empty. We're looking at burnt-out buildings that, or burnt-down buildings that haven't been used in forever. You know, there's a daycare next door that Tony's put some effort into, but really, that's it. And so our hope is, again, just to add a spark.
How much more time would you need to come up with, see if we could kind of come up with something that could work?
Our team at AccuPoint, I'm sure, could...
Instead of killing the process altogether?
Yeah, go back to the table and see. You know, I hear Councilman Hugson's point in 12. I don't know that that number gets us there from a financial perspective. By right, can we do 50-50? We can, and we can see what we can do. But yeah, if you guys want to table it, we'd be open to that and coming back with something else.
Vice Mayor Ferrelli?
I'm happy to amend my motion to table the same time if the 26th is good, if that's...
I could second that, too.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ferrelli? Just for clarity, I think it's important to note, if you read in the packet, there is a limitation to each unit has a one-car requirement within a lease. Is that correct?
No, sir. I don't know how that got in there. That was kind of thrown out in the beginning, but we wouldn't limit it to one car. If you look, there's plenty of public parking around within that 1,000-foot radius, that is by right. So the hope would be that we provide enough parking, but I wouldn't put that in a lease, no.
So where does that come from in the planning commission discussions? If we can get some clarity?
That was my understanding from planning commission. I apologize if that was captured incorrectly, but that was, that was what I heard at the meeting as well.
And I don't mean it as a slight, that's just what I read in the packet.
Absolutely.
We can bring that back in our re-proposal.
Here's how I'm looking at it. I want to cut taxes on real estate, but I also need to grow the tax base. So I'm having to have a real hard re-evaluation on, look, I've had a track record, especially in the Timberlake corridor, of what is appropriate and not appropriate, especially in the Timberlake corridor extending through to Fort. So I want this to work. I want, I want something to happen there, because I represent the other side of the street. And I remember conversations with various stakeholders about what could go across the street as a complement to something like this. So whatever I can do to help us get there, I want to do it. I don't want to see this die just yet, but if we can find the right thing for it, you know, I want to do what I can to be helpful with that. Because it's a point well taken. I mean, Sandusky is as strong as the neighborhood as you can get, let alone Sheffield backing it up on the other side. So for whatever I can do to help, you know, I want to do that. I don't want to see it die.
Dr. Wilder?
My question, did the neighbors have any concerns about the density or about the project?
We met with Pastor Dees from the Quaker Presbyterian Church, and her main concern was that nobody park on their grass. Her second request was, is that there was a playground that was created by the city probably in the, about the same time that the last investment was made in the early 70s. And it has a metal slide and some metal swings. And she asked if I could help the city work to redevelop that park. And we said, "Sure, it'd be great," right? So those were her two requests. Her elders were there at the planning commission meeting, and we had a good conversation, and they were full support.
But no other neighbors had?
No, sir.
Because if you look at that parcel of property, it does look so, like you said, so dead. It's just when you drive past it, it just, I must say, it's not eyesore, but it just doesn't look like it has any life to it.
That's right.
So something definitely needs to go there. I mean, I can't imagine, you wouldn't build a residential house there, you know? I was, I can't see that. Like you said, all those vape shops and other things, already, there's enough of those.
Yeah.
But anyway, it's not my area. But I'd definitely like to see something there that kind of brings more life to that property. But maybe, maybe across the street would bring some life to that area as well, because Fort Hill Village needs some support as well.
Yes, sir.
So something would bring some life to that whole little section of town.
And I think what's so unique about this space is that it's this weird wedge. The address is Ford Avenue, but you're not really on Ford Avenue. It's this odd wedge, it's almost like an access road like you would see in Texas. And to be frank, it's supposed to be city-maintained, and it's supposed to be parallel parking up and down that street. And so I think there's an opportunity for us to like create a spark for the city as well, not just for our own private investment.
Right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilman Dolan?
Yes, I would definitely like to see this retooled and brought back to us. I really think it's really important for the neighborhood that something is done with that building, because I think there's a lot of, lot of investment that can be made in that area. And I love the idea of revitalizing and getting some new life in there, so I definitely would like to see something happen.
I agree. I think, I think the idea of bringing it back on the 26th, because I would really love to support this. I love what you've done on Bedford. I'm so excited. I've been twice in the last couple of weeks, just so excited about what's happening there. And I agree, I would love to see that happening down this street, because it just needs a boost and I think to encourage others. So I would love for you to bring something back on the 26th that we can all say yes to, or at least to get most of us to say yes to. So I think the motion on the table is just to table it to the 26th. If we want to go ahead and vote? Oh, yes, Councilman?
So maybe this is to you, Winter. Right in front where they have number six on the, on the plan up there, there are apparently six parallel parking spots. That whole piece of land right there, I'm assuming that's city right-of-way.
Those six spaces are proposed new spaces?
Yeah.
And that is right-of-way?
Yeah.
The access road that Mr. Calfey's talking about is actually the old Ford Avenue before the road was realigned. So those are new spaces that they propose to add?
So with that, maybe in the discussion, there are some, you know, seven tenths of an acre is not much land. There's a big chunk of land sitting right in the front that the city mows and the cities maintains. I'm sure there's a water line and whatnot that's, per the map. But that big portion in front, maybe that's needed to be that far away from Ford Avenue? Maybe there's an ability to say, "We could sell that to the developer. They can then utilize that for some parking or some little green space or something," because now you're taking, you know, you're taking a chunk of land that's never going to do anything. And it's never going to do anything if we prove this the way it is. That'll never happen. If we look at that in conjunction with coming up with a different, maybe a different solution, there's some land in the front that I don't think the city ever has any use for it. Maybe we do, maybe not. What's the purpose of it? Maybe that could be in some discussions. I think that would be, you know, a possibility.
According to, Mr. Calfey, it sounds like we don't do much to maintain it right now.
Yeah, I mean, you mow it, or you, you know, I'm sure it's, it's, so anyway. So maybe that can help with some of the things, just a strategy.
Councilman Dolan?
Yeah, I just have one question. Where is the park you're talking about in relation to...
Okay, so if we...
Is it the top right-hand corner?
All right, okay, got it. Thank you.
Yes, it would be the top right-hand corner, almost at the intersection of like Dublin.
See it?
It's at the back of the, the church has put in their own park, which is super cute, but then there's this additional random park that's been there, and I guess it's an artifact of something that was given years ago. So yes, Stuart and I would love to help them make a new park.
Thank you.
No, I just, I can't agree more with about wanting to see you guys getting something done here and figuring out a solution. I know that there's been a lot of effort that you guys have worked on, put into this. And I just don't want to kill it. I want to make sure, this is why I'm glad that Councilman Hugson was reasonable to amend his motion to table it so that we can, you know, keep, keep the process going and try to get something that works. And I think that if we work together, we can get there and find something.
And we also, I appreciate the fact that you're an investor that obviously has to make money in your venture, so that, you know, I know you have to consider that in what you're doing, too. So it has to all make sense, so.
That's right.
We'll see you back on the 26th.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote, y'all.
Vice President Passon's seven.
I just said "y'all" when I called the vote, I'm sorry. Not very official sounding. Okay, the next section is public comment. During public comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, a city council takes comments made during the public comment section off the, of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Citizens often express conflicting and diverse positions regarding specific issues under consideration. To encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidation to persons who may express sometimes unpopular opinions, applause, cheers, or jeers from the audience are not permitted. When appearing before city council, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults others, engage in disruptive behavior, use profanity or vulgar language, promote private business ventures, or campaign for office. We will now hear a citizen regarding speaking against the resolution on racist sexism and using merit practices by Lynchburg City Government, CJ Jordan. Please state your name and locality of residence.
Good evening, Mayor. First, I want to thank you all for using my government name on official business. I typically not go by that, but thank you. It is befitting that I am here the month of July, because the month of July was when President Truman introduced two executive orders. One was to put forth EEO in federal employment. The second one was to integrate the military. But the reason I'm against this particular piece, because where are we when we talk about race and sex? Lynchburg, I have not noticed there have been any lawsuits against discrimination, but what will we do with this? We will open up a can of worms. Is there today where, again, I don't want to talk about the Biden administration, but there are places where women have not reached the glass ceiling? There are still minorities that have not been integrated fully out in employment. But even if we looked at Lynchburg's history, by what we're proposing, my uncle would not have been in the first class of black police officers in the city of Lynchburg. But when we talk about race and sex, what are we talking about? Are we talking about getting rid of EEO? Are we talking about merit? Because I can talk about merit. I can remember a time when black folks didn't get hired based on merit. And we talk about the affirmative action ruling, but that was the legal redress that gave those the opportunity that if there was discrimination, there was a legal remedy to hire to get back back pay through legal redress. But where do we go from here if we put this forward? Do we tell our veterans that, hey, we can't hire you because, guess what? You are protected class, because there are set-asides to affirmative action for veterans? For when you go on deployment, when you ask for the city government to maintain your position? But at the end of the day, where do we go? What do we want to do? Lynchburg has a rich history of civil rights and EEO. Don't destroy it. If we're against transgenders and transgender want to be women, and you talk about race and sex, now you open up another class of individuals who wanted to classify as women. And what does that do about the glass ceiling then? When we talk about the ink not being dry, and there is lawsuits against legacy employment for those who are firefighters and policemen for the city, they look forward to pinning their children as a legacy. But then we go on a slippery slope. Lynchburg has a beautiful history. Let us not destroy it. But as I end, thank you for this opportunity. And if I raise my fist, it's not because I'm resisting anything, it's because I'm in solidarity with black folks. As James Brown said, "I'm black and I'm proud."
Thank you. We will now hear from a citizen regarding a pending resolution on merit, Mr. Peter I do not see Mr. Sepharati. Want to move on. Hear from a citizen regarding DEI, Mr. Alan Trefker. Okay, I do not believe he's here either. We will now hear from a citizen regarding the future of city elections, Mr. Jeff Rosner. Please restate your name and your locality.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Rosner, Lynchburg resident. My topic is the future of city elections, and right now, that future does not look too good. The workload of the elections office keeps increasing. The city portion of its budget is less than it was last year. And now, both full-time deputy registrars have been placed on administrative leave. There will be a process to fill the deputy registrar positions. The question is, will this process be any better than the recent process to appoint a new registrar? The advertisement of the registrar position said, quote, "Previous experience in a registrar's office is strongly preferred," unquote. Presumably, that means, that meant satisfactory experience. Now, the board interviewed four applicants on May the 12th. One of the four had been terminated as Buckingham County Registrar by the Buckingham Electoral Board three days earlier on May 9th. The Lynchburg Board should have known about the termination and the reason for it. Then, the Lynchburg Board voted two to one to appoint a new registrar with no experience in a registrar's office. Whether the process to fill the deputy registrar positions is better may depend on how much the new registrar is independent of the electoral board. It is the registrar, not the electoral board, who appoints deputy registrars. On the other hand, here is a statement from the Facebook page of a current electoral board member, quote, "When the electoral board, registrar, and deputy registrar are removed, things will change," unquote. I hope that the registrar acts independently of the electoral board in this process. Better yet, I hope he reappoints both previous deputy registrars. Their many years of experience would help greatly with the workload. Reappointment would be in the best interest of the elections office and Lynchburg voters. And finally, for details of what happened in Buckingham County, see the May 9th Virginia Mercury online. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next section is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving city council's rules of procedure, this item was presented to council during our business item briefings on June 27, 2023. May I have a motion? Vice Mayor Ferrelli?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I'd start by asking the city attorney if he could maybe provide a summary of what is culminated now with this one, is we've had a couple of different versions and where we stand, if that's okay.
Sure. So the resolution in front of you gives a pretty good outline of what the summation are. So the sections that are proposed to be amended are 2-1, when and where regular meetings are to be held. It's adding there that in the month of March, the council work sessions would be held in the training room of the second floor of the city hall, 900 Church Street, Lynchburg, Virginia 24504. Section 3-4 subsection B, preservation of order, speaks to adding additional language to include, council members shall not insult, demean, or belittle one another or the city staff while a meeting of the councils is in session. Section 4-1 subsection B, preparation, speaks to adding additional language to include, such items requested to be placed on the agenda shall first appear before the council during a council work session for discussion, speaking specifically to those matters requested by council members to be placed on the agenda. Part D of that resolution indicates that there were technical revisions to correct sections 4-2 and 4-3. Those were just typos that needed correction. Part E indicates section 5-1A, order of business, details that the council work session and the call to order would be moved to 7:00 PM. Additionally, as part of that order of business, there's just some kind of fleshing out of what the information is as part of the work session. There's a section... There's a new section proposed to be created, 5-1.1 Council Work Session, which basically defines what the council work session is. Section 5-1.2, under Roll Call, creates a new section, excuse me, it's a created new, proposed created new section identified as Roll Call to define what Roll Call is. And then there were some changes as it relates to the public hearing, Section 5-5, with revisions to Subsections D and E concerning emails and voicemails and how they should be submitted for the record in lieu of the current process we're currently using, as well as technical revisions to create an F and G. But the information under F and G is what council's already familiar with. Additionally, as part of the adoption of the rules of procedure, however council chooses to do that with all of the, or some of the proposed amendments, there's also a adoption of the times, dates, and places of the regular meetings and work sessions for the upcoming calendar year, January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024.
Vice Dr. Weller?
Just lines the big more orderly and has more of a standard setting, because sometimes now it's getting a little different. So at least it gives it more of a standard of what we can expect from a council meeting. Thank you.
Counsel missions?
I'm going to make a substitute motion to table these changes of the rules of procedure until the first meeting in September.
Chair of the Board, second. Mr. City Attorney.
Are we able to do that?
So you're supposed to, as I understand it by statute, adopt you at your organizational meeting, set your dates for your upcoming year for city council meetings, places, et cetera. So the-
Separate that part of the question.
The organizational meeting doesn't speak necessarily to council's rules of procedure. The benefit of doing your council rules of procedure now is it includes the meetings, dates, and locations as part of it. It describes how those are to be done, and there's also an accompanying schedule. So it's not, and it's not that the rules of procedure are anticipated by the statute, but it benefits city council to handle it now, which is standard for city councils, I understand it, for the first and only meetings, I understand, in July.
So I've made the motion, so I got the floor. So I guess that I'll amend that motion to essentially separate the question on the organizational part, but table the actual other changes to the rules of procedure. That's what I'm trying to get across, is to table the other changes to the rules of procedure. The reason for that is, I think that we've seen tonight that, you know, sometimes when you take some more time on something, we end up with a better product. And that's what happened tonight with the two other votes we had. You know, we worked with the two developers that were here and gave them more time to come back with something that worked better for everybody. And some of the personal concerns as a council member that I have with this are, one, there were some issues that I had brought forward that I would have liked to see put on the rules of procedure. I don't think that they were ever even considered. So that's something that I see with this. And then also, you know, I just, I just, these rules are designed to not just protect decorum and order and how we do business, but they're also designed to protect the minority on city council. And when we are saying that you've got to have a supermajority to approve a vote in a work session, that's kind of saying, you know what? Five people in here get up, get up here and get in lockstep, then the other two don't matter. Right? Typically, a simple majority works on just about everything. There's very few situations where we have to have a supermajority to conduct our business, and this is saying that we have to do that. And I just think that with some of the subjective items in here, I would rather see some better definitions and explanations of how those things are going to be carried out. Simply, that's it. I just think that we can make the amendments and the changes better. You know, earlier today, we had a closed session doing boards and commissions appointments. We would have had a supermajority to go into closed session in that work session with these changes. And one of the things that I put forward to be considered was actually a procedure or process or a way to do board and commission appointments, because we've all talked about maybe wanting to do that out in the open, right? And seeing how that process works. Didn't even get considered, didn't even get added to this. And, you know, I think that that would be just a beneficial thing to just spend some more time hashing some of these things out, see if we can come up with something better. As far as the schedule goes, the organizational part, I'm okay with separating those questions, passing the organizational part, but I'd like to table till the first meeting in September, the actual amendment to the rules.
You know, it was interesting, and I appreciate those changes there. You know, as we saw Bert Dotson earlier today, and he said, oh, man, he reminded me of all the different times that we voted on many things during our work session. Lots of times, we would hear things, and we would do what governing bodies should do, and that's deliberate. You hear some things rather than just kind of a knee-jerk reaction, we would table those to a work session. And as a work session, we'd talk about those items and would kind of be able to wrestle through them rather than kind of more of a, kind of a quick action. And I think these rules of procedure are the same. You know, I've been under these rules of procedure. They have been very tiny little amendments to them over the last, I think, 19 years when we first adopted those. Been subtle changes. And so some of those changes, I think, were pretty good. And I think some of these on here could work fine. But some of them, I don't see how they could work. You know, once we actually try to figure out how that actually is implemented. You know, we had last meeting, we voted in work session about something else, about an item that had to be voted on. Well, now we've got to have to do all sorts of different other things. And these are council rules of procedure. So how council works, and so this, I think these council rules of procedure, it's incumbent upon council working together to as best as possible to say, hey, we agree with these rules. As they are presented now, I don't agree with those. I think we could make some changes. And that's why I seconded the motion. Counsel member missions to actually, where we can talk about some of these things a little bit more, where we can actually see what some unintended consequences would be. He mentioned today the vote to go into closed session. That was a work session. Last meeting, we voted in a work session. This meeting, we voted in a work session. This says, hey, we'll change the rules so you can't vote in a work session. Some of those things were pretty important. I think some of those items, we were able to get together and agree, I think unanimously, on our boards and commissions. We appointed them. We unanimously agreed to go to closed session. We unanimously agreed that the items that we discussed were allowed by state law. Rather than kind of putting some of these rules and procedures to kind of like to stifle the minority or to kind of make some changes without thinking them through. And again, I know lots of thoughts have gone in here. I just think we can have a better product. I think we can have a better product wherein, I think you said September 7th, or what was the date? September 12th. I think if we can talk about these by September 12th, I think we could come out unanimous. You know, or you can push it through today and say, let's vote on it. And as they're presented, I think we can get something better that would think some of these things through. We've just seen two items that were mentioned by Section 5, the brand-new Section 5.1 subset B. You know, roll call. Roll call, there's another item on here, kind of really defining what the roll call is. And debate shall not be permitted. You know, normally, we're adults, elected by the citizens. And if there's something that we don't like, we kind of maybe speak our piece. But it's not like, you know, thou shalt not debate something. Most of the time, they're not. Most of the time, somebody says a roll call item, and we all kind of go, hey, that's, and we sit here, no problem. You don't have to add extra layers of different things by, because there may be something that somebody can bring up that says, hey, that's good. I think we were very collegial today. We had some previous proposals that came before, some public hearings, that one element, I thought, man, that's not good for the citizens I represent. Council said, hey, let's table it. How about that? And great, let's work together. I hope we can table this until the September 12th. There are some specific items, again, those that I just mentioned in the brand-new sections, 5.1.1. Some of the items, so anyway, I mean, I hopefully, that you, I'm not trying to, I don't want to go over all the different items to change. Be happy to if you'd rather just steamroll through it, unless we want to have more cooler heads prevail. Think about it, talk about some pluses and minuses. I had a good chat with Mary Jane the other day. I sent some concerns that I had. She said, well, maybe that isn't a concern. And maybe it wasn't. I couldn't talk to the city attorney. I emailed, and he was out and wasn't checking emails until coming back today, or yesterday, rather, when I sent the email. So there was no ability to discuss some of these things. So I do hope that we can, we can actually table this. It's not just a delay tactic. It's something where we can actually have a collegial work and come together and say, maybe some of these items could be fixed for the benefit, because it's our procedures. It's council's rules of procedures. It's not somebody else telling us what you can and cannot do. So I do hope that you'll do that. I would respectfully ask that you consider voting for this motion to table until September 12th. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Madam Mayor, I respectfully submit that if an employee of mine is on vacation, I do not expect them to respond to emails, period, and take that time to be away. But that's just me. I would ask my colleagues to consider my concurrence that we should take more time to consider things, which is why the two-thirds rule was proposed, since there's an insistence to surprise this body with making votes on substantial matters and given no previous time to consider adoption or what that may look like. So that's the purpose behind the two-thirds rule, is that there won't be any more surprises. So if I can get a commitment by those in favor of this substitute motion that there will be no more surprises at work sessions or random motions to adopt significant policies, I might be amenable to it. But as it stands right now, I have no interest in supporting this substitute motion.
Counsel Man Dolan?
No, I just was going to say, I think that, well, first, I think these changes were really brought to our city attorney by various council members. It wasn't that the city attorney decided that this should be what we're doing. Am I correct in that, or am I not? The other thing, I think, most of this really adds clarity to areas that this council has had numerous challenges with since first of the year. So I think by defining and clarifying things, I think we can operate on a much more civil manner. And I, you know, you're mentioning the vote to go into closed session. Well, we always get, everybody always votes to go into closed session, so I think that's kind of a moot point. I don't think it's really important. And I do like the idea that we don't vote in closed sessions, so we have time to look at stuff and digest it rather than somebody coming in and putting something on the table and insisting that we vote on it at that moment. I just, I've had a problem with that since we started doing that. I'm not, not in favor.
Madam Mayor?
So if I may address-
Well, I want to make one clarification if I could. So to address some of council's concerns from the last time this was in work session, under B of new proposed Section 5-1.1, the last sentence indicates motions to enter into closed meetings and to accept bids pursuant to the requirements of Sections 15.2-21 et sec of the Code of Virginia are accepted from this rule. So that was added for logistical reasons to ensure you all wouldn't have to basically go back and forth over whether you had two-thirds or not to do something you all always do in a work session.
So I guess, just to respond to some of the, and I think that's said in good faith. You know, obviously, to going into closed session, well, we came out of closed session, and we made appointments. So even if we vote unanimously to go to closed session, even if we vote for these things unanimously, this says, unless a motion to consider. Yeah, so we have to actually change. Anyway, I just think it's, and I can appreciate what Chris said about the votes out of the blue. I don't really, I'm trying to think back. If there was one, I think there was this year. I'm trying to even think of what it was. What was the one that a motion was made that was out of the blue?
Madam Mayor, if I might respond? Vice Mayor Feraldi? There's been about six memory serves on a variety of topics.
I'm thinking about one. Give me one specifically. I mean, I know there was one that I made the motion. I'm trying to think of what it was. Maybe it was the lowering the concealed weapon permit, or, I mean, I think it was, I think it was, I think there was one that I can remember. I mean, maybe it seems like there is more, unless somebody can help my memory. But in listening to what you're saying about, you know, working together to not have surprise motions, that's, I'm fine with that. I mean, I don't think I've, I mean, I've been here for 19 years. We normally don't have just a surprise motion. I think there may have been something. And maybe that something was because we, five of us discussed it ahead of time and said, yeah, we need to do that the first meeting. That didn't happen the first meeting. It didn't happen the second, didn't happen the third, didn't happen the fourth, so maybe I brought it up. Other than that, I'm really kind of thinking of what other kind of surprise motions there were. But regardless of going backwards, going forward, I think it should be about us working together as good as we can rather than putting these hurdles and just artificial bridges that are already, that are already, you know, chasms. And so with that, I'm not bringing up other motions just out of the blue. I think we've had some items in the past, and it's a new day. So changing these rules of procedure should be for us to make them better and more efficient for us, at the same time protecting the minority. So hearing that you would be amenable if we, you know, say and commit and work to not bring up surprise motions, I'm not planning on bringing up surprise motions. And so hopefully, you will, I'm not saying strike this just so we can bring up surprise motions. That's not at all. I'm not planning on bringing up surprise motions, and I'm going to not support surprise motions. So I want you all to vote in favor of the motions as they're presented.
Madam Mayor?
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
I said I would reconsider, and I'm not sold. And I would move to call the question.
Counsel missions?
So I just kind of want to respond to the vice mayor's statements, and I would agree that there shouldn't be any surprises. And you're right, absolutely right, there shouldn't be any surprises. There also should be some communication. And I think that if there was communication outside of these meetings between council members one-on-one, that there wouldn't be surprises. So I am willing to commit for there not to be any surprises, but the question is, are you willing to commit that there will be communication? And I ask that both of the mayor and the vice mayor, because I haven't received a phone call from either one of them since December. And they want to talk about working together and collaborating, but they won't make phone calls.
So the motion on the floor is a substitute, Vice Mayor Feraldi?
What's the motion, please?
The motion is to table the discussion until September 12th. But Vice Mayor Feraldi?
434-509. It's right on my business card. You can call this number anytime.
All right, so the motion on the table, the motion on the floor is to table the discussion until September 12th. So we'll go ahead and vote. So we'll go ahead and vote, please.
The motion fails, 2-5.
Okay, so we'll go back to the original motion is to go ahead and accept the rules of procedure that were amended and approved at our previous meeting. Go ahead and vote, please.
The motion passes, 5-2.
Okay, moving on. Consideration of adopting Resolution R 23065, amending the fiscal year 2024 general water, sewer, and stormwater funds operating budgets to provide appropriations totaling $250,000 with resources from a bond anticipation note, V A N, Series 2023, for costs associated with the issuance of $60,500,000 in bond. This is a second reading from our June 27 meeting. May I have a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Do you have anything else? Counsel Man Dolan?
Thank you. This is the second reading, and I'm going to be voting against it again. You know, basically, we're looking at $68.5 million in new debt. Some of you may remember reading excellent reporting by our News and Advance reporter, Bryson Gordon, talked about the $50 million surplus last year. Now we're looking at burdening our taxpayers with more debt, $68 million more. Our Director of Water and Sewer said that the sewer money was not in any relation with this, with our combined sewer overflow. Approving $68.5 million more in these bond anticipation notes means more debt to our taxpayers for more spending. That has got lots of pork and fat in the spending, and it means a lot more taxes in order to pay off the debt, the interest and the principal back. This is, we've got way too much debt. As an old city, we should be one that is looking the other direction, just like older individuals do. When you're young and you just get out of college, you're buying your first house, buying your first car, you may have student debt, you may have car debt, you may have housing debt. Now that you've aged, now that we're older, now that you're about ready to retire, you pay off that debt. Well, we're continuously getting more and more debt, so I hope we can vote in opposition. I will be. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Missions?
So we had a nice, long break between the work session and the meeting tonight, and I decided to go up to the school administration building and sit in on the school board meeting and get an opportunity to congratulate our new school board chair and vice chair and observe the direction. And one of the things that I observed in the direction were four different proposed scenarios that are coming from this consultant report and the study with what are we going to do with the excess school buildings and rezoning and redistricting and consolidation and so forth. And just about every scenario involved major renovations, major spending, scraping perfectly good buildings off of lots and rebuilding new buildings on them, and there's a new school board. And it was crystal clear that that's summarily being rejected. And I believe, how much was allocated in the $68.5 million for schools, do we know?
Just a couple of million dollars for some maintenance projects, roofs and something.
So when we look at that direction, it's going to be a new day for Lynchburg City Schools, where they're not going to be trying to spend extraordinary amounts of taxpayer dollars to build new buildings that aren't maybe necessary or, you know, different things. And I just, I do not think that it's wise for us to borrow this amount of money. The amount of debt service we're going to have to pay on it's going to be extraordinary, and that comes out of your wallets. So I'm not going to be in support of this, and I hope others will also see that, but that's it.
Anyone else? Ms. Witt, could you come forward real quick before I call the vote, just to clarify something for me?
Thank you. Just to reclarify, the amount that we actually, what, the money that will actually be used is only for things that we approved for 2024, correct?
That's ongoing projects and those appropriated in '24, yes. And just to clarify, this is for the issuance cost. The majority of council already approved to go through with the line of credit. It takes two readings to appropriate the issuance costs for bond council, the financing institutions, our financial advisors, the fees that are associated with closing on debt. So this is only for the issuance cost to appropriate those.
And you explain, I think, that doing it this way actually saves us money, right?
That's correct, because we don't pay the interest if we just went out and financed these upfront.
Okay, so it's actually better long-term for our taxpayers to do it this way, if we're talking about being smart with our money?
And just to clarify, the sewer fund, there are C S O projects in here, just not the tunnel project that council was updated on at work session.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
The motion passes, 4-3.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held on August 8, 2023, at 4:00 PM at the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance 300 Lucado Place. Thank you so much.